Okay.
He has, I guess you called her, right?
You ready to roll here? You ready? Adequate notice for receiving meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Beacon was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and the place of the meeting. Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on the budget, the only thing on this one is the finalization of the capital budget.
I just wanted to double check what we went over the last meeting and I did supply each with a copy of it. And everything that's highlighted on the list is what we agreed to at the last meeting. I made sure that we, I double checked the numbers with regards to, you know, the quotes and requoted some of the items. So I can go down the list real quickly as to what we are proposing in this capital budget. It's going to be five self-contained breathing apparatus, five sets of personal protective gear, one combination extrication tool for Gator Fire Company, five sets of turnout gear for Lenoka Harbor Fire Company, the remount of two three eight and replacement of four AEDs for Lacey EMS, ten pagers and three radios for Lenoka Harbor EMS.
Three, you apply there.
Do I, do I apply there? No, look over in the corner here.
Oh, okay.
You guys agreed to three, so you have to look in the right-hand corner for the quantities approved.
Oh, okay.
If it's different, yeah.
All right, okay.
So then with public works equipment, we agreed to one single axle dump, one Ford F-350, which we are changing to a 550, which comes in at the price there. One tandem dump, one Ford F-350, and we're switching out one of the, you initially had agreed to two F-4350s, we're going to switch one of the F-350s out to a 250. So it's still, it's actually less money overall for that.
So the F, the Ford F-350 utility body is going to be a 550?
550 utility body, yes.
550 utility body, and then?
One tandem axle dump, one F-350 pickup truck and one F-250 pickup truck.
All with snowplows, et cetera.
Everybody has snowplows, yes. And then some of them have, some of the trucks we're getting are going to have the aluminum bodies, so they'll last longer than the non-aluminum bodies.
Okay.
So, okay, then we're going to go with one, did you have questions?
No, that was a big thing.
Yes.
They needed to be aluminum, so it wouldn't rust out.
Yes, exactly. One Toro lawnmower at a price of $11,000.
Okay.
The pipe inspection machine, we had initially put in $16,000, the quote came in at 13.5.
All right, that works.
Yep, the claw bucket, 15.3, the post, the parts for the post lift. Where are you?
I don't know, second page at the top right. Monday gets fixed.
I don't know what order.
Oh, okay, there we go. There we go, go ahead.
Okay, so we went to the claw bucket, then we are at the parts for the post lift.
Right.
The two snap-on diagnostic scanners and the Beacon sign machine and cutter. Some of, like again, some of those prices have come down because we went out and got, you know, just reconfigured the quotes. The new bus for recreation at 90,000, and that's not a full-size Ford and Ford passenger. I believe that was a 26, if I'm not mistaken, was that what it was?
That had the handicap.
Yes. Design and engineering for Laurel Boulevard, and we have the DOT grant at $525,000 for that. Then we go Northwest Barnegat Pines, and that's going to have to be phased in over two or three projects. So right now for design, engineering, it's 105,000. Then we skip on over to go to Nicholas Boulevard, Shady Brook to Capstan Design. It's going to be at 51,000, I know I put 95 on there, but that included construction, engineering, but we're only going to do design this year, so that will be reduced down to 51,000. Hansi's Pond dredging and engineering for that, we have the permits, we need to do that. It's been something that we prolonged for too long at this point.
Okay.
Gilly Park, pre-ground equipment, the equipment, the drainage improvements and the rubberized poured-in-place matting. We initially quoted out 625, that came in at 600, so I was able to reduce that price. We're looking at the new bleachers for Cloone Park and the 15 new picnic tables. Now, some of these things you'll see that says within the capital budget, some of them we're going to bond, some of them are going to be within the proposed capital budget already, so you can see that to your right. Bamber Park East Side, the replacement of the tot lot at 40,000.
Right.
The lakefront revitalization for Lake Barnegat with the water park at 165.
Right. 168, I thought it was.
I think it was 163 and change, actually.
All right, whatever, I'm sure you got the number.
162 and change, I think it was. Gilly Park Security Fence at 15,000, municipal building roof at 85. Evaluations and upgrades to the HVAC system in the municipal building here. The painting of the police and municipal building awnings. The remodel of the clerical section of the administrator's office with carpeting. The courtroom upgrades for the video system here. Three Ford Explorers for the police department. Seven dual-band radios for the police department, one radar trailer. The body camera system, which is being all done outside the scope of the capitol. We have $37,000 in donations, 20,000 from the forfeiture fund and 5,000 from within the line item budget for $65,000 with regards to the body camera. So that's not being bonded, but we agree to that. Two light towers and a stormwater mapping upgrade. So we're about totally with what we're going to bond and what we're buying within the capital budget, like at 2.8 million dollars. We have to reduce that by like 45.
Right.
And that all works at this point within the budget. We have tweaked some of the line items within the departmental budgets this week to make it work with the levy cap and the appropriation cap. And we're looking at no more, if we can even push it to 1.5 cents.
Right, right, I was going to mention that. Max, the max would be one and a half pennies.
Yeah, and we're, we have a tough time getting to that.
Right, we have a tough time, so I hope it'll get a little lower than that and we're going to tweak it a little bit more, but that's, that's where we are. Take a motion on this, right?
Yeah, I would like a motion on it so that I can tell Linda to go ahead and prepare the budget as we, so she can make sure that the down payment money that we need, 5% of that, is in the budget.
Make a motion, same move it.
Can I, can I have an all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that's all I have on the caucus agenda unless anybody has any add-ons.
Nope, that's it.
So just a motion to adjourn this agenda?
Sure. What was I saying, I, I got, I got a couple of questions.
Oh, great, go ahead.
One. This, the thing we talked about at this late year.
What's that?
The revitalization, the recreation water park.
Yep.
What did we decide we're doing at night when it's in there?
We haven't figured that one out yet. It's, it's, it's.
I think that's going to be.
It's a big, we've talked about a couple of things. One, hanging some cameras in the trees at night, increasing the control around that and figure some other things out as we go forward. But it is a big concern, was a big concern when we first talked about this, when Jim and myself started talking about this back in, when was that, November of last year, I guess it was?
Yeah, the last meeting was the first I heard of.
I'll tell you, I don't know, 165,000, I think we could use that money for other stuff. I don't know.
Well, there is, there's an offset to the.
I mean, I don't think it's ready for it, I don't even think this year it's ready for.
Well, we're going to put it at Lake Barnegat, not at Deerhead because of the water quality. It was, I typed Deerhead there by mistake because I thought that's initially where it was going to be, but Jim had already planned it at Lake Barnegat. There will be fees associated with it for users.
Right.
And rental fees if somebody, if a family wanted to rent it for a birthday party, so there would be fees to help offset some of the costs and to raise some revenue for that.
Where they've put it, in other places, they've made enormous amount of money off of it. Some places put it in for free, where they've charged it, they've gotten a good return on it, on a dollar for it. And what we're trying to do is if we put it in the Lake Barnegat and then take a look at Deerhead Lake, and if we can, the problem with Deerhead Lake is the muck right up on the beach. And if we can figure something out to change that the following year, we will put it in the Deerhead Lake. Any other questions on that, Nick, or?
Everything is good to me, I'm just going to stay away from that one.
Okay, all right, all right.
So now, at this point, we are anticipating the introduction of the budget at the next meeting with the public hearing, the last meeting in April. And we did get our calculations for state aid and all those number, well, I call it state aid, but it's energy tax receipts, none of those numbers have changed. They are staying the same as they have in the years past.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Move it. For a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we'll go right into the Baywood Township meeting. Okay, adequate notice for proceedings for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise and pledge on a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first reading of ordinance 2019-01, setting salaries for seasonal employees.
In order to the township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey affixing and determining the salaries, wages and compensations to officers, employees and members of the governing body of the township. This is basically to address the new minimum wage law. What I did is I projected it out for 2019, 2020 and 2021. We will be having to do another one in 2021 to do the remainder of the years. But again, this will be for our seasonal recreation, beach patrol staff, bus drivers, assistant supervisors, supervisors, seasonal summer laborers. It does affect Class 1 and Class 2 special law enforcement officers. And again, it projects it out through 2021 at this point. The township government entities are exempt from imposing the $10 an hour starting salary. Come July 1st, we get a one-year reprieve, so we are taking that one-year reprieve, but we're jumping up to $11 next year for entry-level seasonal employees. And those seasonal employees strictly have to be seasonal, so I can't call them back or else they immediately have to be jumped up to whatever the current rate is. So if I'm paying somebody as a seasonal recreation staff or laborer $9 an hour and it snows in November, I'm automatically bumping them up to that $10 or $11, depending on where it falls on the calendar, because they're not considered seasonal if they come back after Labor Day. Can I have a motion on that?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number two, first reading of ordinance 2019-02, authorizing the exchange of certain lands with the state of New Jersey.
In order to the township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the exchange of certain lands within the township of Lacey whereby the township shall acquire Block 315, Lot 28 as part of an exchange of lands pursuant to NJSA 48,12-16. State of New Jersey is acquiring Block 3300, Lot 8 from the township of Lacey, which is out in the middle, off of 532, in the middle of what I call George Cloone's property. It sits actually in the, in the middle of everything around him, so we're like the donut. The state acquired all of Mr. Cloone's property just recently and closed on it. And for that, we swapped them, what we've all known as the Jones Road Soccer Fields, down off of Jones Road. It's eight and a half acres that the township has acquired in a land swap. And hopefully in the future, we will see that grow into some type of park of some sort and improve those fields. This, we've only been working on this, what, how many years, how old's your oldest?
He's 10.
10 years we've been working on this with the state, that's how fast they work.
Can we take a motion on this?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Pardon me. First reading of ordinance 2019-03, accepting the dedication of a public roadway.
In order to the township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, accepting the dedication of a public roadway. Currently, the unnamed roadway that goes into Carney Savings Bank, it's part of a subdivision, is being dedicated as part of the subdivision to the township.
Take a motion. Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-91, awarding contract for weed control.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, awarding a contract to South Jersey Weed Control Incorporated for seasonal weed control for the township of Lacey. Now, this is a five-year contract, it's obviously starting this March, and it will run through October 31st of 2023. And each year, it's $10,569 to do numerous locations throughout the township of Lacey with regards to weed control.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-92, designating Block 1837.01, Lot 8.06 as an area of redevelopment.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, designating Block 1837.01, Lot 8.06 as condemnation redevelopment areas for which powers of eminent domain may be exercised pursuant to NJSA 48,12-A6. This is the parcel that is adjacent to Ocean First Bank. It is part of the other properties that we've gone into a redevelopment area for Phase 3 of Walter's Development Group. The planning board has adopted the redevelopment plan and has now passed it on up to the township for our consideration to exercise our rights with the development of that site for affordable housing.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-93.
Could you do me a favor? Could somebody go out in the hallway and turn the light on? That hallway, there's no light on in that hallway, thank you.
Straight ahead by the door to the left.
Or think that nothing's going on.
All right, let me start over again. Resolution 2019-93, authorizing the execution of a traffic enforcement grant.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing execution of the special traffic enforcement program grant. We'd adopted this resolution two weeks ago, however, we received more money than anticipated, so that's always a good thing, so I'm amending the initial ordinance of resolution, and this one is in the amount of $43,716.
That's how much additional we got?
No, that's the whole, I had to reword it exactly the same way or else the state says, no, no, you didn't do the right ordinance. We got about $8,000 more.
That works.
Yes. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-94, authorizing a shared service, shared services with the Borough of Pine Beach.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing execution of inter-local services agreement with the Borough of Pine Beach for chief financial officer and qualified purchasing agent and finance office services. The Borough of Pine Beach has recently suddenly lost their chief financial officer who was part-time, and they had contacted us with regards to utilizing some of our staff to get them through to the end of the year. Obviously, this is not a good time of the year to lose your chief financial officer with a budget and annual financial statements and debt statements. So Mrs. Cabello and two members of her staff have agreed to help them out after office hours, and the Borough of Pine Beach will be paying the township of Lacey in an amount not to exceed, I believe it's $58,000 if I'm not mistaken? Yeah, fif, I'm sorry, $60,000.
Move it, move it.
Second?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-95, authorizing the cancellation of taxes for disabled veterans.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2019 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on Block 1581, Lot 41.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-96, canceling outstanding municipal court regular account checks.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township Municipal Court regular account in the amount of $4.
Move it.
Motion?
Second?
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-97, canceling outstanding municipal court bail account checks.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township Municipal Court bail account in the amount of $2.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-98, authorizing the premium payment of tax lien 2016-208 to be turned over to the township.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing a premium payment of $8,800 on tax lien certificate 2016-208 on Block 1146, Lot 14, to be turned over to the township treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 54,5-33. The lien holder did not exercise their right to foreclose within a five-year period, so the township has the right to have that premium payment turned over to the township.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-99, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit help for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Second, move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-100, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to township of Lacey County, motion to state of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,645,104.93. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes, with noted extension G2200 and T0035.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes, extension on H2746.
Okay, resolution 29, well, we just did that. Monthly reports.
For the month of February, the Department of Community Development received receipts in the amount of $93,167.92. Municipal Clerk's Office received receipts in the amount of $6,699.63. Municipal Court for February received receipts in the amount of $20,556.84. For the month of January, the Municipal Court received receipts in the amount of $20,259.97. And for the month of February, road opening permits were received in the amount of $4,860 and recycling commodity was received in the amount of $742 for the month of February. Motion to accept the report as read.
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes on February 28, 2019.
Move it.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm getting slower here.
Yeah, you're getting slower, wake up.
Been a long week.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes on February 28, 2019.
Move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for the following Knights of Columbus, Horizon at Barnegat Women's Club and the Rotary Club of Fort Kent River.
Move it.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Do you have, you have any add-ons?
I have no add-ons tonight.
Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Catch?
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of business items. At the planning board meeting the other night, Lidl was there to redo their sign. They were looking to open June, June or July. Aldi has submitted permits, so Aldi, we might be getting an Aldi. The area, the condemnation area need redevelopment that we voted on tonight was ordered, was a plan in order to satisfy our co-obligation, which the state is making us do. The settlement conference with Save Barnegat Bay was postponed till April. Our town center application has been postponed till March 26th. And if any, and we've recently received the tax collector's report, and we talk about this every year, but if anybody has a chance to look at this, it's, I think it's one of the best reports produced by Lacey. Our collection rate is 99% for those interested, so.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee member Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the weather's starting to get nice out there, huh? Today, it was beautiful. Just please, be aware of the children out there playing because the parks are starting to be used. I've seen them down in Cloone. I'm now walking all the time, so I'm on that fitness groove, so I'm walking that Cloone Park and everything, so. Other than that, I represent the MUA, that's my job, that's my liaison job. I just want to let everybody know how the MUA is doing, they're doing great. Next month, I will have Eddie Wolf here, he'll be coming to speak on behalf. There was a lot of questions about the MUA, which we answered for you, Regina, when we were there, but we're going to bring it out to the public so they realize about the new building. So they're going to be coming, he's going to be coming to talk about that. The, you haven't had an increase in, oh, five years? Yeah, it's been five years. We have a lot of plans this year we're going to be working on. I think we're, we're going to try our hardest to have a decrease for the next time. And we're working hard at it, we've been working on it for the last three years, and I think it can happen. I want to thank, you know, the MUA, the commissioners there do a great job. The chairman does a great job, all the employees of the MUA, they do a great job. You know, when they're called out, I just had an instance on my street where a main broke and they were there in five minutes. They got there and solved the person's problem. It wasn't in the street, so at least they were able to get it fixed. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee member Cortola?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief tonight. I just always want to thank all of our employees, in particular tonight, thank the police department. They're always above board when they reach out to get different grants for public safety, whether it's grants to help out our schools, you text, you drive, you lose, drive sober, get pulled over, click it or ticket. Not every municipal department participates in all of those grants. Hours each year goes after these grants, they get a lot of them most of the time, and that enables us to pay our officers out and grant monies are at no direct cost to the Lacey taxpayer. So there's been texting initiatives, there's been DUI initiatives, there's been initiatives for education. And one of the things I'm always proud of up here is the fact that nobody works in a silo. Our police department is in lockstep with our municipal alliance and our DPW. So this is, this is the type of town where, you know, they say it takes a village to raise a child, and I believe it. And our employees, starting with our, our police department, our DPW, all of our fire, police, first aid, first responders, you can't underscore it enough. I say that to you because I believe it, the people that know me in the town know that that comes from the heart. We touched again on budgets tonight, I think the things that we bought were things that we needed. Some of the trucks were unsafe for some of our employees, and I feel that they needed to be replaced. We appropriately pulled them off the road and some of them now will be replaced. I think the police department needed upgrades, I think recreation needed some upgrades. We bought what we could, and because we've been frugal over years past and we enjoy a good bond rating, which enables us to borrow money at a competitive rate. We talk about kitchen table issues, I'll close with this. Uh, some people say it's political, I don't think it's political, I think it's policy-driven, and so that's why I'll bring it up. Um, recently, there's been a proposal, uh, by Governor Murphy in the newspaper, uh, to actually tax rainwater runoff if you have an asphalt driveway. And the thought behind it is because the, the rainwater runoff will impact our estuaries and things like that, it goes right into the bay. Although I would agree with that, I don't think there's a tax that certain people ever met that they didn't like. I think it's wrong to put that on the backs of hard-working people. There's proposals now out of Washington, and people think Washington is three or four hours away. It's close. This stuff is real. Don't laugh, it's not black helicopter stuff, this stuff is real. When somebody proposes a tax on every single stock transaction, if you have a 401K, if you're an average working person, like a lot of us are, uh, these things are real. They will, they will hit you over time. Uh, I don't think it's fair to tax people that way. I, I just don't think it's fair, I think, uh, we pay more than our fair share of tax. We have a very low unemployment rate. Uh, I think that we're all enjoying that right now nationally and in New Jersey as well. We hear voices in Washington like Senator Elizabeth Warren who want to break up Facebook and Amazon. I mean, you know, here, we, and we try to support our businesses in this town. We'll go out, we'll talk to our businesses in this town, we'll talk to business people in this town. This town has become a business destination above other towns in our vicinity because we are business-friendly. And businesses can come here and don't have to work and, and, and damage our environment. We put somebody on the moon 51 years ago, we could have businesses open up and be environmentally friendly. I know we could do it, it's part of American exceptionalism, and I believe it. So I will close with those comments, I would ask people to keep their eye on the national picture, keep their eye on the news, and pay attention. Um, I don't want, I like border protection, I don't believe that we're a sanctuary city, I know we're not, as long as I'm here, I'm going to fight against that too. So, thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I got a couple of things to say. Um, okay, let's deal with the first one up, which is going to happen on March 25th, and that's the marijuana law. Um, supposedly, they're going to take a vote on this, um, and we'll see what happens with that. We did get a email down from the League of Municipalities yesterday that basically states, while the leaders have an agreement, the Assembly and the Senate do not, it has to go through the Assembly and goes back through the Senate, and then whatever changes the Senate makes, it's got to go back to the Assembly. So, we'll see what happens with that. Um, let's just hope they come to their senses. That's, that's what I'll say about that. Um, we have something that is going on that has drawn the attention of 101.5 and the Ice Bay Park Press and NewJersey.com, and that's called the Estate Card. We are the only town in, 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 uh, New Jersey that has it, and basically, you load it up and you buy your goods, your groceries, your gasoline, and part of it goes to reducing your, uh, taxes here in town. In fact, uh, just yesterday, I got a text from the governor about it, and he and I texted back and forth for about five minutes, um, and he's ecstatic about it, and wants, has asked me to keep up, keep, keep him updated, and I certainly will, certainly will do that. Uh, what else do I got here? Oh, uh, anybody know what 2021 is, besides the year? It is, our hundred, it's Lacey Township's 150th anniversary, and we will be putting together, uh, a committee for that and going forward, and having some big plans for that, uh, and going forward with that. Obviously, you heard about the budget, um, it was time to spend some money, it was time to, when you have a gas tank fall off a truck going down a road, it is time to look at the, uh, our, uh, vehicles and so forth like that, it's time to, time to start replacing some of them. And we stretched it as far as we can possibly go, uh, without, and I think that sometimes we did create some problems back there and a danger, and talking about public works, and we want to correct that right away. Um, parks, uh, Mayor Juli-, uh, Committeeman Juliana spoke about that, I too want to speak about it. Uh, they may not be open, all the fields, I don't know what Jim has done with that. Sometimes he keeps them closed for a little while longer, just to, so they can refresh themselves after the cold winter and stuff like that, and if you see a sign out there that says, you know, field is closed, please just respect that. Uh, there's a reason for it, we rotate the field so we can keep them, we, there's a lot of money invested in the parks in this town, and, uh, so I just, I would just ask that, that people would, uh, abide by that. And now that they like savings is here, the kids are out a little bit later at night, they're on their bikes, so let's just be careful. Um, man, I'm talking a long time tonight. Jones Road, 10 years, eight and a half acres, basically for some land that we would never, ever use. Uh, I think that's a good deal. Uh, and it's kind of funny, I was kind of checking when Veronica was talking about it because we had a meeting with Holtech today, um, and, and we asked for some, some, some things from them, and they were like, "Well, maybe, well, maybe." So, and it was a very, very good meeting with Holtech today, um, and they will be, if everything goes right, they will take over the plan on July 1st, 2019, and we go from there. Um, anything else? I think, I think that's all I have. Oh, one last thing I have here, um, I do want to bring this up, I didn't write it down, is this is something we started last year, we got the Good Reception, and this is the Volunteer Fair Membership Drive, and it's Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019, and what this is, is all, uh, service organizations, people, volunteer organizations, we're going to put you under one roof for the night, we're going to advertise it for you, and hope that you'll come out, and if you have something you want to join, whether it's the Historical Society, or the Old Guard, or something like that, you'll be able to meet with those people and, uh, and, and sign up if it's, if it's for you, if not, it's not. But, uh, this is something that we had a great success last year, and we're going to do it again this year. Again, that's April 3rd, 5 to 7 down to Community Hall. Um, and that's all I have, all right? Um, uh, comments from the public? Do we have any comments from the public?
Don't fight over it, guys, come on, ladies, gentlemen, ladies.
Come on.
You wait too long, we close the floor, Regina, so don't give us that chance, come on.
Mr. Kennas was drinking, he wouldn't be up here.
He's drinking water.
Well, that's what I meant, drinking water, he wouldn't be up here.
All right, Regina, this is Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Um, did I hear correctly that, um, the police are going to get body cams when you were discussing?
Yes, we are.
That's, that's really good news.
And the good, the good part about it is our chief of police did a great job with this. He went out to our service fraternity organizations, he got a lot of money from it, he went to take some money from the forfeiture account, and then I think we had to throw in a few, few thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
That was a great deal.
It's 60,000 for five years, it's a good deal.
Yep, something we really need, and I think it'll help the department a lot. Um, so have you heard anything about a public hearing, though, with the NRC for that Holtech deal, or it's just going to go through?
I, I actually reached out earlier this week, and I have not received a phone call back, so.
You haven't heard anything? That's very disappointing.
I, Regina, on that, then, I did talk to Holtech today about the public meeting, and they're open for it, so it's just a matter of whether we can coordinate it. We did, they did do one back in October, and I was down at the community hall, very, was not well-attended at all. Uh, I'd like to try to, try to put this one in the auditorium in the school and really, and really, and.
Yeah, I think people will come in.
And Holtech will be there, and we're trying to get Dr. Singh, the owner of Holtech, to come, but we'll see about that.
Right. Um, the Carney Bank Service Road that you're dedicating as a public roadway, does that street have a name?
It's unnamed at this point.
It's still unnamed?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Because there is no green sign there to show that it's even a street, so I wasn't sure. All right, um, the Resolution 92, block 1837.01, lot 806, redevelopment, that's going to be, um, what do you call it, condemned eminent domain?
It's the Township of Lacey's property already.
All of it?
The front part that goes, yes, the front part of it, back to probably be just, uh, equal to the retention pond behind Ocean First Bank here, is already Township of Lacey property. We had acquired that back in 1999 when we purchased the old nursing home site, because the nursing home owns all the way up to Lacey Road. So we had subdivided that off at that time, and we were going to keep it for future development, but since we still have to meet some of our affordable housing needs, and Walters had said they'd be willing to build us the additional 70 units, we, um, told them we would give them that property plus the two blocks behind it that we are going to go into eminent domain on.
Oh, there are two other blocks that have to be added to this?
There's two, 1852 and 1853, right behind that parcel, that would have to be condemned, yes.
All right, that's what I was confused on this with, so that's a separate thing altogether.
Yes.
Okay, so this is like part one, and then part two will come in.
Yeah, 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 we did part one, this is part two, actually. Mm-hmm.
All right, I just wanted to let everyone know, March 18th is the introduction of the 1920 budget for the school district, it's at the lecture hall at the high school, um, this Monday at 7:00 PM, and then the actual budget public hearing is scheduled for Monday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM, which is an hour earlier than our usual start time. Okay, so if you want to come, it's May 6th, put it on your calendar.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, everybody, Ted Tanak, Lynn of Carver. Um, I just wanted to commend the Township Committee, actually, for passing Resolution 2019-95, which was the waiving of the property taxes for disabled veterans. Uh, those people have sacrificed their health and well-being for all of us, and, uh, I commend you for waiving their property taxes.
Thank you.